Good evening, everyone. We are glad that you are here in this conversation for Columbus County Candidate 2024 to talk about our school board at this time. And we'll be having our county's school board is going to be the first one up. And then with our moderator, I'll introduce our moderator. Uh, we also want to talk about our sponsors. We want to thank our sponsors. We want to thank for the food that we brought, courtesy of Ben's Will and White Will. So always shop low with that. And then we also want to thank our candidates for coming. That's always the most important thing. But we also want to thank you all because I do know as a person that's born in the light that the importance of um putting your name on the ballot is always a difficult thing because everybody's got their own angels. So we just want to thank you all for coming and those that and those that think about for this of Columbus County where we're going to go forward and using this as opportunity to understand what folks' ideas are about our school system. Because we realize if we want to educate every student in our county, what's the best way to educate them? So they can be great lawyers and doctors or even a trash person, whatever they want to be, this is the ground from which you have us. So we want to thank them for that. All right. And then uh, well, our sponsors are, this is Columbus County Forum Week. I am the executive director there and also uh, the Columbus uh, Columbus County branch of the NWSB is also a co-sponsor as well as the Columbus County Honors. They're co-sponsoring this event for us and we want to thank them. And we also want to thank uh, Mr. Lee Lee for opening up this fine facility and for us to have this conversation tonight. And so without further ado, I get the opportunity to introduce John Evans. He's a WECT anchor um, uh, that we see on the news every day. We want to thank him for being at his business schedule to have this conversation, to lead this conversation of Columbus County. So we want to thank him uh, for this opportunity. And we also have some bonus material and those things are all not partisan. This is a non-partisan event, so we want to make sure and keep it that way. Thank you again. Have a wonderful night evening.
Thank you, sir.
Please speak your applause now. Um, I'm just kidding. You don't know how much I'm kidding. Um, I am, I am honored to be here. People don't know uh, oftentimes that um, we in the media learn as much at these events as the public does. And and I think it's just as important for us to put a face with a name, but also put a policy with the name, a thought with the name. And so it's good for us to be a part of these. That's why we do as many as we do every year. And that's why Marlando, I appreciate the invitation to come back again. Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, running for our school board seats. Uh, first off, thank you. Thank you for signing up on the dotted line. Thank you for being willing to run in an atmosphere that let's face it is not easy. Uh, in an atmosphere right now that oftentimes is not pleasant, uh, but it is one that needs to be done. And so uh, we are going to go first with the candidates running for Columbus County Board of Education. We have five candidates who are joining us uh, up here on the stage. We have two candidates running in the district one race. They are Emily Bryce and and Charles Jacobs. Would you give that a round of applause, please? And we have three candidates running in the district five seat. They are Cameron Bird, uh, Steve Long, and Kathy Rouse. Please give that round of applause. Now ladies and gentlemen, I uh, I have told the candidates that we are going to try to go about a minute for each one of our answers this evening. Uh, I've also told them that I am not going to cut them off if they're continuing to go in a minute. They go minute two, minute three, whatever. I'm not going to cut them off immediately at sixty seconds. I'm going to let them finish their thought. Uh, I'm not going to let them start another thought because then that takes away from the opportunity for another candidate. So uh, I will be as kind and gentle as I possibly can be in nudging you. It might be something like, uh, thank, thank you, thank, thank you, thank you very much. If you get to about the minute fifteen or minute twenty, I'd like to go over and tap you on the shoulder. Uh, but so far, and most of the events are done. We haven't gotten yet that far, so we hope tonight will continue. Uh, I'm going to start first with opening statements from each one of our candidates. Going to give them sixty seconds to introduce themselves, tell us why they're running if they'd like to. Uh, I have questions for each of the candidates and what I have tried to do is make it so that the first person alphabetically is not always answering first, you're not always answering the question first or second, you're not always following the same person or in front of the same person. So hopefully you all will get to answer first, second, third, fourth, fifth as we go on down the line. So hopefully we will get it and we will go till uh, about seven forty or so, about forty-five minutes. Okay, let's go ahead and begin. We're going to begin with our opening statement alphabetically, and that will mean sixty seconds for our opening statement for Columbus County Board of Education candidate Cameron Bird. Mr. Bird, you have sixty seconds, sir.
Sir, oh, ladies and gentlemen, I was just talking.
Can everybody hear him? I don't know if he can hear you. Is there a microphone there?
Test me. Test me. More of a greeting call.
And Mr. Bird, we're not taking this out of the time of service. We've got sixty seconds. One minute.
Without further ado, the mayor of Columbus County has a microphone on his hand. He hasn't been able to do it a few days, but he will try this. Um, Cameron Bird, I'm from Hawthorne area. Uh, I've lived in Hawthorne with the exception of going to college my whole life. Um, I've tended to live there my whole life. Um, I have two sons, one that is at Southeastern, doing welding and H1 program. I have a seventh grader at East Columbus. I've signed her up for school board because several things, I've always wanted to be a part of the service a little bit and some, some issues, you know, with the school in East Columbus, the way that land is purchased with the bottom a little bit, um, in terms of, you know, taxpayers are struggling. Everything costs more. People open up those tax books and see what they owe. They want people to vote that, that wants to manage their money and not just vote along with anybody. And I, I went to the complaint the other day in East Columbus where maybe you've got your opinion on where, where, what the school looked like. It was very interesting, I thought, and maybe that should have been done with the community um, where the school was set up.
Okay. Mr. Bird, that's it. Thank you. Okay. Next for her opening statement this evening, we will go to candidate Emily Bryce. Ms. Bryce.
Good evening. My name is Emily Bryce and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, I'll quickly take a little bit about myself. Um, I am a career teacher. I've been in education my whole career. I grew up in Columbus County. I intend to be here and raise our daughter who is a Columbus County school student here. Um, when I look at our school system, I see a lot of potential and I see a lot of um, low expectations being met. So I think we have an issue with expectations. I think we have a accountability issue and I would like them to see our teachers have the support that they need from someone who has been in classroom inside of the walls of the school um, and knows the dynamics of the school. So we're looking for more um, higher expectations, more accountability, um, and wisdom and leadership. So um, I thank you for the opportunity to be here and I hope that um, what I have experienced in the classroom can come to the table as a board member.
Thank you, ma'am. Next for his opening statement this evening, we will go to Board of Education candidate Charles Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, when you get the microphone, you'll have sixty seconds, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Jacobs Junior. Uh, living in Framing North Carolina. Um, been there all my life. I'm so honored to be a part of this uh, this forum, to share with you my desire to be a board member of District One. Um, I have served as a board member back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine. Uh, I have experienced uh, many things on the board during that time. And I do understand some of the challenges that our school boards are facing. Um, I have many pet peeves uh, concerning the um, school board, the way we operate and how we should operate. I have some pet peeves with our parents. I have some pet peeves uh, within our community itself concerning our school board. And there's a lot that needs to be said about the transparency of why and what our school board, our school board do. And um, we have to face one issue that I think that our school board then and now is um, really abhorrent to discuss. As long as we help um, black and white, brown, Indian, Hispanic and Indian, we will always help a culture challenge.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. About sixty seconds.
And then we try to sit at the table to make sure we put these issues on the table.
Thank you, sir. Next for his opening statement this evening, we will go to Board of Education candidate Steve Long. Mr. Long, sixty seconds, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Long. Uh, I'm in Board of Education now, sir, and I've been serving for three years, this is my fourth. Uh, I live in Powerway with my wife and I was retired thirty-one-year educator. So I have a lot of advice to pull from. Uh, my feeling is I want to be on the school board for, for the students to continue doing what we've done. We are making some progress in the school system and I would like to be there to continue the progress we are making.
Thank you, sir. And for our final opening statement this evening, we will go to Board of Education candidate Kathy Rouse. Ms. Rouse, sixty seconds, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rouse. I currently live in the Department of Public Education Committee. And uh, I grew up out of the, grew up in my sister's group because I took a longer migration and as I started my children, I felt that at that time in the world, I moved back home with my children, rather than my students to go to high school. And basically, I've been an education advocate all my life, by confession as a social worker. Chose that profession because I learned in the violence, working in schools, hospitals, um, I lost my parents and everything. Basically, I've been a state regular, the child protective, uh, social worker. We were required to sit in school, working part, bringing them to work in the school and courts as well, that we are closing doors on the school and because the courts and the judge department was going to the home and had to keep the children in school and stay in court.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you. That's sixty seconds. Our first question this evening, we're going to ask Ms. Rouse for the answer first, if I can, please. First question, ma'am, is how much input do you think the school board should have in developing a curriculum of the school system and what should the priorities be in that process?
Thank you for that question. When it comes to curriculum, um, I think we need to remember our job as an educational system. Um, it is our job as an educational system to um, meet our students where they are, whether it be um, with learning challenges or um, whether we have academical gifted students. It's our job as a school board um, to examine the curriculum that is given to us and its appropriateness for our students. Um, it is not our job as a school board to indoctrinate students. Um, we need to be sure we are teaching them the skills that they need to be prepared um, for college and career readiness.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bird, I'd like to ask you, sir, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system and what should the priorities be in that process?
But the question, well, let's be all known, not everybody's going to be a surgeon, not everybody's going to be a journalist, not everybody's going to be a doctor. We're going to have people that need to be tradesmen. In our local county, when I was growing up, there was about fifteen to twenty people with different welding shops. Right now, I'm on two, if you need something fabricated. It's so easy for people to go buy something else when you could, when we had, if we had tradesmen that um, could fix things. So to get to the point, I think that we need to look at, to take the, the guidance factors, make sure that they're looking and finding the best avenue for particular students to really be involved in terms of to take a look at the student and, and send them where they need to go. So it needs to be a balance between the, the students that are going to be your doctors or lawyers or surgeons and the ones that's going to fix your home, fix your plumbing, weld something back together for you when it breaks. So I think it's, the school board should, should, should look at it and have a balance between them.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rouse, I'd like to ask you, ma'am, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system and what should the priorities be in that process?
It has been my experience that the curriculum is like a violent tool. And it's a simple justice possibility to see what is, is performed in place. So I have to work closely with the system and the children. I have been reading this week to the parents, going to the beach, to the training unit, and we have to have the parents also draw into that. But as far as saying, um, what, that's just a thing about, that's a thing that is down the, the current issue, which we're seeing with the, that is called becoming, that is the, and some of the things that we require to do are set by state and federal laws. And so therefore, we have to take all of that into consideration.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jacobs, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system and what should the priorities be in that process?
Thank you for the question. Um, kind of rhymed with the, Ms. Rouse's comment about how the curriculum is handed down. I think that the school board members uh, should be focused on making sure that we're having transparency on hiring and looking out and helping get the right teachers and educators to help deal with the curriculum that our students will have to have. We've got too much going on at Yale right now that, uh, and our public students trying to ban books and get rid of uh, educational material that's good for educating our children and trying to somehow shed a cultural war. And the board members often get oppressed to that and what, what damage that is doing to our children in their education.
Okay.
We need to educate all our children, all our children. We need to, not them first and not just them first.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Long, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system and what should the priorities be in that process, sir?
Thank you. Uh, this year, we developed another draft. We allow our lead teachers along with our curriculum director to observe quite a few curriculums and they narrowed it down to three. We put those three to every teacher in our school district. Our school district teachers then select the curriculum that they choose to go with for this school year. Eighty percent of the teachers in our school district picked one. And our board approved that and now will simply back our teachers up and let them have a say and input in what they're teaching every day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobs, I'd like to hear your response first to the next question, if I can. The second question, a follow-up on the one I just asked. What is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into a school curriculum? What is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school curriculum?
I believe it plays an important role. Um, we have children coming in our school system now with many challenges. And if we don't uh, address and identify these social issues and challenges that our students are having, then we aren't able to serve them where they need to be served. We need to get some professionals and folks that are educated and equipped with the, with the learning and ability to help address these issues so that our children can benefit more and can still be a part of the school system.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bird, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the county school system?
Mr. Jacobs, thank you. I actually think it should be integrated because you have classrooms, sometimes you have a disruptive student that are causing teachers to have to spend extra time focusing on them and not focusing on the ones that actually learn. So it would be good if the school had a mentor or a counselor or somebody that could identify these issues when they find a problem student or, and focus on what, what it is that is causing that and maybe something wrong at home and maybe some traumatic event. And to be able to focus on what is causing the student that is disrupting the other classrooms, I definitely think it's important to focus on um, the mental health and other ideas socially that the child is struggling to get help from.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rice, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school curriculum?
Uh, when you say integrated into the school curriculum, um, I think we should have the resources available for our students as they need them. Um, again, I believe our curriculum is about um, teaching, educating our children and preparing them for readiness for college and career. That does often include those very vital social skills. Um, and we do have some students that are coming with um, with, with ideals that are coming from their home that are causing, that got backgrounds or have faced trauma that is causing mental health issues. We have those um, school psychologists in place, we have behavior specialists in place, and we have school counselors in place. I think it's important that they are part of the resources that are available, but that we make sure our curriculum is focusing on preparing our students to face college and career readiness with the cognitive thinking skills, the critical thinking skills, with the right skills they need. And then we don't let the social, emotional learning interfere with the basics that we're trying to teach our students.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Long, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school curriculum, sir?
We today have a, uh, we have, we have guidance centers and we have professional psychologists in our school system. We also have a professional through coastal horizons, a group that comes in and analyzes students. These, they can make the analyzing then between the teacher and the other three groups. They sit down and develop an individual learning plan for each one of those students. Then I think that student is then placed into the curriculum level and positions where they can uh, excel the very best that they can. Uh, I agree that we can't have students in the classroom disrupt them because we've got to educate the rest of them. But we do have to provide a place for those students so we can give them also the best education that they can possibly receive.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rouse, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school's curriculum?
As far as I know, there are a lot of the, the school social workers, the school psychologists, um, we have a special day, much aspect, it's something very right to students with emotional problems, which is also our obligation in my country, being able to produce these children because it's likely to, no child is not necessarily one with um, a mental health issue. They may come with that. And it's also supportive to be able to teach these because we must still operate to educate those children, those of those that reach out to the losses of school and all types of stuff. Um, and building all of that together, we could ship all of this in a part of the community we're in now because we're separate from our students. And actually, we, uh, to improve indications, these children with the strong conditions and integrated before the others. And trying to do that for a lot of those people.
All right.
So to prepare, uh, uh, it depends on the emotional, what we have to count as.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, next question, Mr. Long, I'm going to ask you to respond first, if I can, sir. Most of the schools in the county school system had performance grades of C or lower for all students in the Department of Public Instruction's Accountability Report for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. What steps do you believe need to be taken, concrete steps, to raise those school grades?
School grades uh, are based on eighty percent test scores and twenty percent growth. Uh, I believe that we have gone in, uh, we've hired a superintendent and a assistant superintendent who are lifelong native of Columbus County people. They have spent their whole career in the Columbus County school system. I believe they have a handle on what needs to be done by including our teachers and picking the curriculum. Our teachers are going to be all in with that silo. And between the two of them working together, I think we can improve our scores. We are seeing numeric increases in our scores, but to go from a, a C to a B, it's a fifteen-point spread, it's a fifteen-point scale. So you could be at a fifty-four and be a D, you could also be at a sixty-nine to be a C. So to reach those scores are really difficult, but I believe with our superintendent, assistant superintendent, our teachers being on in the curriculum, that we're going to achieve uh, better results in the year.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rouse, most of the schools in the system you are running to represent had performance grades of C or lower in the DPI's Accountability Report for the last school year. What steps do you believe need to be taken to raise those performance grades?
Well, I say it's intense and not necessarily a challenge. My son, I talked to him, he's a age student, he couldn't take the test. He's still young. He couldn't sleep at night, he couldn't, uh, he couldn't get his, uh, he didn't get his score. And he's out of, in that because as he started integrating, the integrated test, uh, he failed the official test, man, by one point, yet he's an age student. So we have to look at the way that we can evaluate our children and it should not be just on the numerical score that they take on a test. We include the whole child and if the teacher or the superintendent is aware of things that are happening in the home, in the community, the child may be homeless. And Charlotte, she was homeless father. But the children still had to come to school. As a matter of fact, school was a safe place for them, where they were fed and adults could see them, but they may not be able to do their homework and some of them are very bright.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Jacobs, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise the performance grades of schools in the Columbus County? to raise the performance grades of schools in the Columbus County school system?
Um, I believe the steps that should be taken should be a team effort on the part of the teachers, the parents, and the community. If we had advocates, parent advocates or parents, to get the parents more involved in their child education. And then inspire them to come and be a part of the school system by coming to the meeting, you know, you have your parent, the teacher advisor, advisory board meeting. And then we get together, like we call it, talk by encouragement. We know the grades are challenging to reach, but I tell you, when you encourage children, when you encourage the community, when you encourage the parent, when you encourage the teachers, we have a team there, and if we get together as a team, we can win. And we can bring the grades up. Because again, it just takes people coming together, work together for the same goal. We want to see our school grades go up, and we know we can.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rice, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise the performance grades of schools in the Columbus County school system?
Thank you, it's an excellent question because we do have an academic issue in Columbus County schools. I think we have to examine our structural strategies. And I think we need to look at our lead teachers and depend on some of those roles of the lead teachers. Some of our teachers are beginning teachers, they need to be coached by veteran teachers. That's where our mentor programs come in. I think we need to look at best practices in teaching. There's research-based intervention programs that work. We've got to be targeting the skills based on beginning-of-year testing, looking at those students who are performing low at the beginning of the year, and looking at what intervention routes need to be put in place, and using our benchmark scores along the way to see what is being meant, what is not being meant, what skills are still lacking, and continue intervention. We've got to look at instructional strategies, we've got to look at our time on task, and make sure we're using our time in the classroom wisely.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bird, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise the grades or performance grades of schools in the Columbus County school system?
Thank you for the question. First of all, everybody knows that high school employees do believe that they want to work harder. If they're getting the incentives that they need to, so rewarding teachers for high test scores is something we need to look at in terms of making sure that they'll try a little harder. And in terms of the scores going up, we may need to look at doing like an early testing, twenty-five percent of the semester, see where we are, and kind of gauge what we need to do from there. But like I said, we need to make sure that we budget the money that is afforded to the county properly, where we can make sure that we pay our teachers competitive wages we will keep in our county, competitive of excellent teachers that will not be going out of county to work because the money will be there to pay them.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rouse, I'm going to ask you to respond first to the next question, ma'am, if I can. If elected or in some cases re-elected to the school board, what specific policies would you promote to ensure that students and staff are safe at all county schools? And when I talk safety, ma'am, I'm talking threats from harassment, bullying, and weapons on campus.
Well, that's a wide range. When we begin with the most current, the largest shootings, if the school system should, and I imagine they have a place for school safety plan, which includes now shooter drills and various things. And that is also another one that is governed by the emergency manager or city manager. And if school develops a plan for safety, from drills the size of fire drills now, you have shooter drills. And various students strangers on campus, and it's a whole lot. You see the gaps in place, see how often it's done, and see the... And talk to a few students just around, you can see, do they feel safe or what's happening in the drills? And as far as bullying, that goes back to the behavior and if you want to say, mental health and peace. Because that child goes through these, goes through behavior problems, bullying is the assistant person.
Okay, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Long, if elected, what specific policies would you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all county schools? And when I talk safety, I'm talking about threats from harassment, bullying, or even weapons on campus.
The school safety issue is just paramount to that. With all that's going on everywhere, including Columbus County, we have to cut every threat seriously. We have just upgraded almost all entrance doors to every school. We've just purchased some of the top-of-the-line weapons detectors to put in schools. We've got to employ everything that we can possibly employ device-wise to keep our kids safe. We also have to have inside the building, the SROs in every school all the time. And then we have to have consequences. And the consequences have to be dealt with severely promptly and make examples for some of the people that are creating the threats of rape to them by these folks. So we need to let the sheriff's department take over and take care of that at that point. The bullying issue, that needs to be a known bullying zone every time they step inside of our building. If there's bullying going on, that student needs to be removed. That's my opinion on that, and that's what we're trying to ask.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Rice, if elected, what specific policies will you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all county schools? When I speak of safety, I mean threats from harassment, bullying, or even weapons on campus.
I think we can all agree that school safety is our number-one priority, even above educating the child. We have to have a safe environment. The threats are there, we've seen it locally, just in our local school system in the last couple of weeks. I believe it's important to be sure our school staff is trained with emergency preparedness strategies. In my experience as a teacher, I have gone through extensive training from being prepared if there is an active intruder, an active shooter, or even if the threat is right inside of our classroom. Many times, the threats are coming in the door in the morning with our students. So we do have metal detectors, but if our procedures are not effective, the metal detectors are not effective. If we're not listening, our school staff, listening for those threats, there should be no tolerance. And the threats, no tolerance for the bullying. Those have to be addressed immediately so we can send a message that we have no tolerance for the threats of bullying. We have to be sure that we are listening, paying attention, and being sure that our strategies are effective or we're going to find ourselves in a situation where we've got something like what we heard going on in Georgia recently with a school shooting.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bird, if elected, what specific policies would you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all county schools, whether it be threats from harassment, bullying, or weapons on campus?
Mr. Thank you for the question. Obviously, the top-of-the-line devices for metal detectors or any weapons and firearms or anything that the school board can purchase, that'd be first and foremost. And then noticing and taking things seriously. You can walk around a campus and you can see a kid that's kind of alone or kind of to himself and his shoulders flipped over and really not fitting in. The teachers need to take notice and see what's causing that and really, if there is bullying going on, to take it extremely serious and to not just pass it off or let it go, but just a non-issue. Because most of the school shootings reported to what we hear nowadays is students that have had severe bullying throughout the time ahead of that. So it looks to me that some of those couldn't have been prevented if they would have took it in note to look at the students.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobs, if elected to the school board, what specific policies would you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all county schools, whether it be threats from harassment, bullying, or weapons on campus?
Well, I think that the bullying part, there should be like three different levels of addressing the issue. The kindergarten, middle school, all of my my grandbabies, my grandbabies in town. If this is high school, then I believe that it takes a whole more formal measure with young adults. Bullying and hat, the shatter nail, zero thoughts for bullying, any way of... When we talk about the safety of the school, I might never be able to explain, but it might require more conversation. But I believe that there should be only one way in the school. One way in, there should be a security officer there. More fun should be given for our security officer. And I believe that our children have to have ID passes to get in. And so when we talk about gun violence and people coming out of school and shooting, we give them too much access. We got to have ID to vote, but can't we give our children IDs to get in school so they can say?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, thank you, sir. Next question, Mr. Bird, I'm going to ask you for the first response if I can, sir. How important is it for you that the Board of Education be transparent to parents and to the community? And what steps would you pursue to increase transparency among the board and among the administrators in the county schools?
Thank you for the question. I think it's really important for the school board to be out in the county to ask questions. I kind of touched on it a little bit earlier. You know, with the new school going down near Bolton, I think that the, I've heard some good positive reviews and I've heard some negative reviews. I think the public should have been a little more involved with the location of that. It is what it is in terms of where it ends up, but given the people, the voters, the taxpayers, the opportunity to choose that, so I definitely think that the school board should work real closely with the community, the district, that individual falls in, and have a first-hand relationship with the parents and know the parents. And the parents of that district can approach them and find the needs that are necessary for that district.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobs, how important is it for you that the Board of Education be transparent to parents and to the community? What steps would you pursue to increase transparency among the board members and administrators?
Good question.
Thank you.
It's very important that transparency be part of the school board functioning because the parents are the, the parents of the voice that I want to hear, but I can't hear them if they're not there. And so they need to make it a priority to have parents come to our board meetings and allow us to be open with them, reveal them the children all that we're trying to accomplish. I know that we have closed sessions in board meetings or we can't discuss policy with the staff and about this, employee and other student. But the parents and the board members ought to have a, have a relationship where we know that all our monies that we're spending and we're trying to encourage our schools to function and that the money goes where it's supposed to go. We can't be buying, spending over fifty-some thousand dollars and building a school and then having our monies go into charter schools.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And function like that.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rouse, what steps would you pursue if elected to increase transparency among the board members and administrators?
Transparency, well, I saw that we've done it because as a school board, we represent the community. And that would be like not informing yourself. Because we're not able to represent myself, I'm able to represent the interest of the students, teachers. There are administrators and other staff that run a school. Everybody in the school is not, is not a teacher to make it more to make it operate. So therefore, it would be, I think, the school means, the school board should be, the meeting needs to be more publicized. And the chairman today, if you know, the parents are welcome. As a matter of fact, that's one, that's supposedly one of the core components. And that's me, I went to, I looked outside, there was a sign that said, "Sign up for, if you have comments, if you want..." And there was no pad, no pen, no paper, it was just a sign. So I thought, I was like, oh, okay, that means something that we have to change. But I think we have to work on it to let parents know that they're included, is welcome.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Long, what steps would you pursue to increase transparency among your board members and the administrators?
All board meetings are open to the public. There's a comment period, public comment period at the beginning of the board meeting. So everyone's welcome to attend, and everyone's welcome to speak during that public comment session. As I said, there are certain personnel issues that can't be discussed in open. But even afterwards, the personnel lists are turned over to the news media and once everyone on that list has been notified. We have to have open sessions and open transparency with all of our parents. They put us up here and they need to know what we're doing every day. They need to keep up with, there shouldn't be anything hidden anywhere from any parent. It should be straight out in the open. And that's the reason board meetings are in public and open to the public. And anyone that wishes can come inside to the board meeting, anyone that wishes can speak. And I think we need to continue that as much as possible to keep whatever issues possible and keep the public informed with everything we do. And the meetings are published, we get hours in advance of any meeting where there are three or four members.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rice, what steps would you pursue if elected to increase transparency among the board members and administration?
So board meetings are an important part of it, but I think that's just a snapshot of the responsibility of a board member. It is our responsibility as board members to be a part of the communities, all of the communities, not just our own, all of the communities. As we're a part of those communities, we're developing relationships with those community members. With relationships being developed, trust is being developed. And I think as our communities begin to trust us more as board members, when issues arise, there's a connection there, there's a relationship, we can communicate clearly. Of course, there are policies regarding personnel issues that we, as board members, are, they're not to be discussed. However, if we're involved with the community and we're listening, we're part of what's going on in all of the communities in Columbus County because those are the folks that have elected us, those are the folks we're serving. We need to know our families, we need to know our students so that we can reach that goal, which is to educate our students well.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And I want you to keep the microphone, I'm going to ask you for the first response to the next question, okay? The next question, what must be done to increase teacher retention in the school system and to ensure that teachers are supported financially and professionally?
Thank you, that's a question that's very near to my heart. As I've said before, my career has been in education. Our teachers, the research shows that we're losing a lot of teachers within the first five years. A lot of our companion teachers are, they're worn out, they're overworked, and they don't have the support that they feel like they need. First of all, our, as a county, we need to better look at how we're using our taxpayers' money to offer supplements to retain our teachers. We have a problem with losing teachers to the surrounding counties and to other school systems. Our teachers are on the front lines. As a community, we have to partner with our teachers. The education of our child is not just the school's responsibility. It is my husband and my responsibility to be a part of her education. Our parents must partner with our teachers, our communities must partner with our teachers, but we've got to take care of our teachers as far as our foundational needs concern and look for ways to offer better supplements.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bird, what must be done to increase teacher retention in the school system and to ensure that teachers are supported financially and professionally?
Thank you for the question. I kind of touched on that in an earlier answer, that we need to make sure that our pay rate for our teachers is comparable to Rosewood County, to Panter County, surrounding counties. And for the teachers that do, that take the extra mile, that stay the late hours when their test scores are a little better, we need to give them some time, make sure that they're rewarded for that. Because it's an old thing, the teachers are going to talk, and they're going to say, hey, look, so-and-so got a bonus or one of this, and we're giving them incentive to go after that bonus and chase that bonus. So I think number one is protecting the taxpayers' money with no waste of spending in other areas and take care of the teachers first because they are the ones that are there day-to-day, hundred and eighty-eight hundred, they're there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobs, what must be done to increase teacher retention in the school system and to ensure that teachers are supported financially and professionally?
Definitely need to increase in wages, definitely. Teachers are coming out of their pockets to help their children learn. We should be able to... We should be as a school system, giving our teachers everything they need in order that they might have the, have the confidence that the school, um, the school board is behind them, the parents ought to step up and let the teachers know that they are behind them. Uh, and help them with educating and urging the children. And second, yes, for teachers that go above and beyond, to call certain of their students. We should let them know that there are incentives and there are rewards given to those who, who just go beyond what is ordinarily asked of a teacher.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Long, what must be done, sir, to increase teacher retention in the school system and to ensure that teachers are supported financially and professionally?
We all agree, I think everybody in North Carolina would agree that we need to pay our teachers more. There's no doubt, that, that's obvious. But we have, uh, some limitations set by state on what we can pay, so that's kind of a problem. But we need to pay our teachers more. Uh, we also, here, we have a program that's called Teacher Assistant to Teacher. Any teacher assistant can go to college. Online, about eighty-five to ninety percent of that, not legal, they're going to get a teaching degree in just a year or two. And our school district will pay for that. Those are homegrown Columbus County people. And once they're here, they're going to do that teaching for life here. We must prepare our teachers to teach and give them everything they need so they're not looking for ways to do things in there. By including our teachers in our curriculum choice, we want them to feel a part of this district, not their teaching for this district. By doing that, I think we're going to enhance morale, and by enhancing morale, we're going to enhance teacher retention.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rouse, what must be done to increase teacher retention in the school system and to ensure that teachers are supported financially and professionally?
Well, we should begin by, we have a lucky way, but we should establish a minimum start wage for teachers, specifically for teachers. Because it is a shame that a young, bright, uh, person coming out of school becomes a teacher and then can't pay their rent or buy a home or even support their own family, people don't leave their teacher for the kids. So, minimum start wage for all teachers and incentive payment for the veterans, it doesn't start there. Then, uh, because everything isn't money, we need to elevate. One time to be a teacher was like, I mean, it was like being a astronaut or something. It was a prestigious profession. And it should be promoted and respected as such. Because one thing the rich man, the poor man have in common, you have a teacher. So they're, they're all teachers, as a matter of fact. You know, you, you set an example. And so, we start there and then, uh, ask the teachers what they need.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move to the closing statements from the candidates for the county school board. And we are going to have a closing statement first of sixty seconds from Columbus County School Board candidate Kathy Rouse. Ms. Rouse, sixty seconds for your closing statement, ma'am.
Well, it's great to be here and it's great to run my children, wanting to know why I was born and came out to do this. And sometimes I, I really don't know. But I wanted to be of help and service among the kids. And, um, it's a great thing to be. I learned so much. I hope, um, I learned from them. I hope they learn as much from me.
Thank you, ma'am. Next for his closing statement this evening, we will go to Columbus County School Board candidate Steve Wong. Mr. Wong, you have sixty seconds for your closing statement, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, we, we, the school board, I think, is moving in the right direction. And this school board has our school system at heart. I got in this four years ago for the kids. I'm going to be in it for the next four years for the kids and the kids on me. We're going to do everything we can to get every child in our school district the education that they need to go to a four-year school. We're going to, uh, the curriculum, the city, we're doing today, career technical education. We're trying to prepare a child, a student to go into any field, to go in. And that's what I want to see happen. I want to concentrate on the career technical policy. Not every child's going to college, not every child's going to work. Some go into the military. We want to prepare them to go into college, to go into the military, or to go into a career. So I would appreciate your support and November to continue to help our kids.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobs, our closing statement, that will come from Columbus County School Board candidate Charles Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, sixty seconds, sir.
Uh, thank you. I've worked in two school systems, Columbus County and New Howard County. Um, we wait too long before we help a child really come to an understanding of what they really want to do. Children are leaving, um, in ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade and still don't know what goals or what direction they want to go. I think we should start a whole lot earlier to try to encourage children to be more focused and purpose in their education and in their goals. Um, I work for the workforce development in New Howard County for the children. And trying to get children prepared for their future. Every child is not going to go to college. But every child should have a chance to pursue their goals. And that's what our goal, goal and desire is.
Thank you, sir. Next for her closing statement this evening, we will go to Columbus County School Board candidate Emily Rice. Ms. Rice, sixty seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, again, I'll reiterate, but I feel like I can bring to the table as a career teacher, um, having thirteen-plus years of experience in the classroom and, um, being a current certified teacher, um, with North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Um, I believe we've got to increase our community involvement. Parents and community members must be involved in the school. Strong communities make strong schools. Uh, we must increase our accountability. We've addressed the fact that we've got an aesthetic issue, we've got an academic issue. Um, with increased accountability, we can reach our goals. We must raise the expectation. We've seen lower expectations are being met. If we raise the bar, um, I think that with relationships created, we can meet the goals. Um, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and you ask for your support in November, because I think it's time for us to have an educator on the school board.
Thank you, ma'am. Next for his closing statement this evening, we will go to Columbus County School Board candidate Cameron Burr. Mr. Burr, sixty seconds, sir.
Thank you for your time tonight, everybody coming out and running if you want to stay home. I certainly appreciate that. Um, if let, I work hard on the board. Not only, obviously, the, the Board of Education speaks for itself, children are a paramount issue. But also, I work hard for taxpayers to preserve their money, their hard-earned money that they give up everyone who's going to work for. I work hard to, to implement the career technical education, to get these career traits that are, that are now lacking in today's society. I will help to make sure that we have competitive wages for the school teachers to, to retain them and the workloads of the community and the, the administrators of the school to achieve that. I certainly would appreciate your support in November and look forward to hearing any comments afterwards.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do give our Columbus County School Board candidates a round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to feature the candidates running for the Whiteville City Board of Education. We have four candidates, running two in District Three, two in District Four. We're going to begin like we did the, uh, the first forum with, uh, opening statements from each one of, I have to get my time clock going here, for some reason it's reset. We're going to go with opening statements from each one of the candidates. We'll go alphabetically. And then, as I did before, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we will, uh, I think only the one with the red on our resume, of course. Uh, we'll try to rotate it so that not everybody's always answered first or second or third or last. So I'll do my best to do that along the way. We're going to go with opening statements for our second forum. And we're going to begin with an opening statement from Whiteville City School Board candidate Ernie Gaskins. Mr. Gaskins, we'll go sixty seconds, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ernie Gaskins, out of retired, principal from Michael High School, all up in the air from the county board.
Mr. Gaskins, hold that microphone a little closer to you.
Ernie Gaskins, good afternoon.
Okay, let's start along with him. Go ahead.
Okay. Ernie Gaskins, uh, retired principal from Michael High School, uh, ten years of experience. Just love kids, love getting to know them. Uh, actually, work with kids every day right now. Uh, he has a focus down in, uh, the college, taking time out in the distance and speaking to the students.
Thank you, sir. Next for his opening statement, we will go to candidate Greg Merritt. Mr. Merritt, you have sixty seconds, sir. Please remember to hold that microphone up close to your mouth.
Thank you. Excitement here. I will be completing my twenty-fourth year in this position in November, November fifth. Uh, it's been an honor and privilege to serve this board, to serve the people, the community, the children of that district and the whole, uh, school system, the Columbus County school system. We have a good school system, excellent school system. We're continually in the top two academically in San Hills Ridge. That is thirteen, fourteen districts, school districts, uh, around us. Uh, we need to continue pressing forward. There's more improvement to do. Uh, I am a part of that improvement and, and improvement comes first with, I had to, the expectation. You have to have the expectations for everyone to pull together to accomplish what you set out to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next for her opening statement this evening, we will go to school board candidate Jackie Ray Pierce. Ms. Ray Pierce.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Ray Pierce. And I am the owner of January Realty here in Whiteville. Um, I am a broker and worker in charge for my company. Um, my mom and dad were both career educators. And I know how important a good, solid education is. Um, it was instilled in me by both my parents. Um, I like to be involved, um, in many aspects of education. Um, I'm currently on the foundation board at SCC and at South Beach Community College. And, um, I have enjoyed that position. And I have learned many things about what, um, uh, an individual needs in order to get a higher education. And the avenues which they can go down in order to get a higher education. So, um, I'm also very involved and I volunteer through the White, in the Whiteville City School System. So, education is very important and, um, that's why I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next for his opening statement, we will go to Whiteville City School Board candidate Edward Squires. Mr. Squires, sixty seconds, sir.
Uh, believing in these, Edward Squires, I would be glad to have him perform tonight. Uh, you know, I'm from Robson County originally, Columbus Tribe. I was there in Robson County, aged nine, moved to High Point, Oklahoma. Whereas, after I received my social degree education, my bachelor's degree in education, I ran an early education program while I was up there in High Point, Oklahoma. I moved to two thousand sixteen, got married to a young lady who lived in Whiteville. Moved there in two thousand sixteen, relocated here, started a teacher's school in Robson County. Uh, that time, I got my master's in education, so you tell liberal education. In addition to education, I'm also running my own business, real estate, cleaning, the seven, seven. I currently have an insurance company there on one thirty. In addition to teacher's school, in addition to working with young people, I continue to coach now. I've been coaching now for six years, eight years. I hit the ground running here in Columbus Town. I'm part of Juvenile Crime Commission here. I'm part of Dream Center here. I'm a big blue booster here. So I put, uh, uh, come in, I get, um, impact, I have that, that community. I'm not just here to take for the community, I'm here to give to the community. I'm here in my goal, here, one of my goals, uh, with the news party called, most of my goals are for Whiteville City Schools. I said, one of my goals as a board member to make sure that we're the top ten percent of testing in the whole state.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask you for the first response to the first question, sir. How much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum for the Whiteville City school system? And what should the priorities be in that process?
I don't think it should be very much. Our major job as a board member is to set policy for the school system. It is superintendent and his staff, the principals, central office staff, to pick the curriculum in. And we might tweak it a little bit, uh, from time to time. One of the main things that I want to keep out of my district and for Whiteville City Schools is there's a lot of evil approaching school systems around the country. Thank God it's not here in Columbus County. And we need to keep it that way. There's things that other school systems are doing around the country that the people in Columbus County don't know our kids to this day. But other than that, uh, I think, uh, my main job is to help set policy and encourage it, uh, for the school system.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Squires, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system? And what should the priorities be in that process, sir?
I, I, I differ a little bit from Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we should set policy. I believe as a former educator myself, I believe that we have to make the curriculum, we have to decide the curriculum. As a board member, we should understand the curriculum. I believe as a board member, that you're responsible, or you're ultimately responsible for the school system. That school system passes, come to board with, school board fails, come to board with. So I believe we need to make sure that the curriculum is appropriate for our young people. Make sure that it handles social, emotional skill, make sure the child, child kids, make sure it just takes on challenges, will help them move to the next level. So the board, they need to do a policy. I believe that we have, should work as superintendent to make sure we have appropriate curriculum. But take someone who understands curriculum to make sure they can implement the right curriculum.
Thank you. Mr. Gaskins, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system? And what should the priorities be, sir?
I think the board should have some, uh, but again, it's the responsibility of the policy. But I think that they should be, we should be involved more of the basic skills. Our kids are not learning, do not know how to write. Uh, most of them do not read, uh, at the age of a kid. I think the basics should be looked at and put into the curriculum somewhere. Because these kids have to have, a couple of weeks ago, we were working to give and ask them to sign a form. And then the kids were like, this kid was a senior, says I, I not know how to write. And if you cannot know how to write, we're eighteen years old. So I think life skills has to play a picture somewhere. I think life skills are very important because those are the basic, uh, things that we need to know.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ray Pierce, how much input do you think the school board should have in developing the curriculum of the school system? And what should the priorities be?
Thank you for the question. Um, I do believe that teachers should be involved in the curriculum or at least have a say on what curriculum they should teach. Um, however, I do feel like that, that is superintendent's main, one of his main responsibilities is to make sure that the curriculum is appropriate and of course is stacked with their help. Um, and of course, you know, uh, the school board definitely needs to have say in that. But I do like the idea of teachers coming and being a part, um, of judging and deciding on what curriculum needs to be given. And like Mr. Mayor said, one reason why I wanted to get involved with the school board is to, um, make sure that the evil that is basically at our backboard is not needed. Because our students do not need to be, um, um, they do not need to have to deal with being in the back, so that's the way.
Thank you, ma'am. And keep the microphone, because I'm going to ask you to respond first to the next question. We have a little bit of a follow-up. What is your stance on whether social, emotional learning, and mental health resources should be integrated into the curriculum?
Okay. Um, I am a surrogate parent in the Whiteville City School System. And that is for the special needs and foster children. Um, I am the only surrogate parent that we have in the Whiteville City School System. Um, I am, uh, I meet regularly with, uh, the school psychologists and, um, the teachers that deal with special needs kids and that nature. And, um, so I know that we have counselors, they have psychologists, um, on campus to help with, um, certain of the issues that kids have. But I think the pandemic has definitely, um, caused more problems for students. Um, mentally, socially. Um, I also work with the youth in our church and, and I see it. Um, these kids that are in our youth group, they're, they don't know how to socialize. Um, they don't know how to talk to each other. They don't know how, you know, the phone is there, the phone is in the back.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Squires, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school curriculum?
I think social, emotional should be integrated into the curriculum. First of all, we don't understand what social, emotional teaching is. What social, emotional teaching is, to teach the kids how to be responsible, teach the kids how to handle their emotions, teach the kids how to deal with relationships, teach the kids how to have peer pressure. Those are what social, emotional learning is. Because it's many kids, they're in my access all day, they don't know how to, how to handle their emotions, they don't know how to back. So how do you do that? Maybe teach them professional development training. Teach them even know how to handle emotions, teach them how to, how to refuse. I think when I taught at school, I had certain kids in my classroom, I knew they had certain behaviors. But I knew how to handle those kids from my back. So if I saw a kid that gave me a challenge, I pulled that kid to the side, saying, what's going on? So social, emotional, how to deal with relationships, carry it up to adulthood. You have people today that's in careers, they get mad at work, they fire off, they want to fight, they want to do this and that, they don't know how to handle emotions. So I think it's very important for us to integrate that into the curriculum so kids can be more successful dealing with their emotions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gaskins, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school curriculum?
I think they should as much as the school possibly can allow it. I have, I think that funny because I actually do that every day at the high schools here in the county with the community of their program. And our kids have a lot of problems with what they bring to school. There's some problems at school. I think we should also remember that where the kids getting some of the problems wrong on Facebook, one of the main places they get that, the problems that they're bringing to school or non-problem, social problems is a physical lack of, they're not getting that home. Somewhere, somehow, you know, the root of the problem is I believe we're struggling against parents, parents have to be honest. School can be pretty good at what they did with the asking, instructing and teach kids because school cannot do everything. So some type of way we have to build relationships. You know, relationships are built through trust, through talking, through development. And I think kids have to be involved. But I think the school can somewhat do a pretty good job. I think we have to get the best in there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merrick, I ask you, sir, what is your stance on whether social, emotional learning and mental health resources should be integrated into the school system curriculum?
We have a freshman that will help with all those skills, but I do not think it needs to be integrated into the curriculum. I heard of some wise teachers in my twenty-four years and one of the things I remember one of them saying is time tests. And what they were referring to is that there is a lot of material that a teacher wants to impart to each student in their class. And they thought about not having enough time to prepare them for the end of grade, the end of course exams that they have. So I think that the social integration for students should be out there with athletics, band, drama, art. We have all types of things and I encourage all of our kids to see what they enjoy and get involved in some of those things for the social interaction with their peers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gaskins, I'd like to ask you for the first response to the next question. Most of the schools in the system, you're running to represent at performance grades of C or maybe lower for all students in the Department of Public Instruction's Accountability Report for the last school year. The question, sir, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise those performance grades in Whiteville City Schools?
Thank you. I think, I think relationships are very important. I firmly believe that when teachers and parents, school system develop relationships with the kids and kids develop relationships with parents and teachers and everybody, all, all of the players are together and the relationships are developed. And learning is very risky to take place because I trust you. You trust me. I think one of the things that we don't do a lot is, we talk about it, but we don't do the home visits and just actually see where that kid is coming from. Once we learn each other, we trust each other, then that kid will sit and that kid will learn. That makes a difference whether it's under the P T entry or if it's in the median out of bill. It's all about relationships. I like you, I'll learn from you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merrick, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise the school performance grades of Whiteville City Schools?
I think it starts in each school with the administrator. They set the temperature, they set the tone for that school. Their encouragement, their expectations for each teacher is what drives the grades. So as a board member, you want to hire the best administrators and the very best teachers that you can because the backbone of education is your teachers. Great teachers and the great students. Get your administrators to support your teachers and encourage them and have them expectations high and you will raise the scores. And that's what we expect to happen at Whiteville School.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ray Pierce, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise the performance grades of schools in the Whiteville City School System?
I agree with Mr. Merrick here. You need to have quality teachers in place in your schools. And they have to be backed up by a administrator that believes in them and that will encourage them and encourage not only the teachers but also encourage the students. And I do believe with Mr. Gaskins, you have to build a relationship there. And you also need to make sure that there's also relationships with parents. Parents are a big part and in my opinion, I think they are some of the most lacking part of why education is, can be difficult at times. It's because of the lack of parent involvement and support. So if you want grades to go up, it is an all-together opportunity for teachers, parents, administrators and the students to come together in order to make the grades go up and they will if we have that support.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Squires, what steps do you believe need to be taken to raise the performance grades of schools in the Whiteville City School System?
This, quick text call from me. When I first started teaching in Robson County, we were the number one test school in Robson County. Who was that? One thing we didn't have to report, now we have to issue teachers on grand test schools. We can hire the best principal, we can get family involvement, all this, we have to issue teachers. I like when they say kids learn from kids. Mr. Squires, when he's saying teachers learn from teachers. There was teachers in there that had to pay all the teachers on the A's and Bs. We as teachers and a fellow, we need to part with those teachers to see what they've done and were successful in the classroom. What strategy did they use to make it successful? Number two, we have to identify parts of the test that are weak for our kids. I went out with a teacher that went from, I'm one of the top ten percent teachers in the state of Oklahoma in my test school. I got paid a check from them. Identify the areas in the testing that were weak. Also must be provide a center for our students. We have to make it where you want to be successful. We create a vibe in our school system, there are roles involved. Say, look, if you pass, we doing this, we doing that. So we made it with a center, not just the teachers, but a center for the students last day, now they should be by coaches for our teachers. Making sure that coaches become and help those teachers to strategize those sets of attempts that we give.
Thank you, sir. And I ask you to keep the microphone because I'm going to ask you for the first response to the next question. If elected to the school board, what specific policies would you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all city schools, whether it be from threats of harassment, bullying or weapons on campus?
First of all, we have policies already in place there in Whiteville City Schools. I went to Whiteville City Schools last year, finished in the high school. Which to me was great. As a parent, we can have a granddaughter, have a granddaughter since Whiteville primary and I like how they have a big rebellion in. So we have all, we already have things in place. I want to applaud those children in Columbus County, three or two weeks ago, those breaks at the school. I remember down east, they called and told the student, they told the principal, these kids are getting, come in with bad guys. So I want to applaud those kids that done that. But in addition to the exterior that we've done, in addition to the actual office we've done, we got to create a separate environment for our students. Just goes out with the day, because I know the fighter white over the day over bullied. Two girls jumped one girl. It's a lady, one student text me and said, coach, they fighting. How that, how that kid know they was fighting and bullying the teachers themselves? We have to create a vibe that has a word, the students feel safe to tell others, I'm being bullied. Tell the teacher I'm being bullied, tell the cops I'm being bullied. We have to create a vibe that's on that. They go back to the social, emotional piece that we have. Create a vibe that I feel free to talk to my teachers, feel free to talk to my counselor. That I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be a temp guy coming to talk away. We create a safer zone where it's not easy to talk to the skin. I mean, peer variation, when you have initiative, you have initiative to work together, have peer variation, what's going on with you Johnny, what's going on with you Billy, listen and talk about it. The only thing we need to do outside of class and not just the experience.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gaskins, what steps would you take to ensure students and staff are safe at all city schools, whether it be from threats of harassment, bullying or even weapons on campus?
I think it goes right back again to the word relationships. I think that when you build good positive relationships in that zone, I think that's what happens. I don't know too much about the budget of the school board, but I think maybe you might look at maybe cameras in the hallway, cameras in the classrooms that we can see. I think no matter what you do, you know, when people get to a certain point and they want to do, fight or bully or whatever, it's very difficult to stop that through technology, through just conversation. That's, that's a hard, that's a hard method, but I, I think, I think for the most part schools do very well. I hate to say that maybe one day, I mean, I never said that maybe, you know, I'd run a fence, maybe another piece, but I would hate to see that. I think maybe look at the cameras, but I, my key piece is relationships. When you have good relationships, you can pick up those people to talk to each other, discuss things.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ray Pierce, what specific policies would you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all city schools, whether it be from threats of harassment, bullying or weapons on campus?
I think the Whiteville City Schools is doing a fabulous job right now with security and safety within our schools. Yes, we do have a button where you have to mash and that can identify before the door opens. I think that's wonderful. I'm not sure, probably we do already have this, but I'm not sure. But I think that you should have a plan of action when, when, you know, there's a threat to the school system. And there also needs to be accountability and swift action when you do have even, even the word that there may be a gun on campus or there may be a weapon on campus. There's got to be a relationship there to where the student feels comfortable in telling the teacher or telling them the administrator that, that they are possibly aware of something like this. So those things need to be in place and R R A in place. But when it comes to bullying, I had firsthand experience with bullying. My daughter was bullied in C X Central Middle School. Not only a couple of students, but a teacher was involved in that. And I addressed this with the administrator and it looks like he's no longer there and the teacher's no longer there either. But he wanted me to pay him that.
Okay, thank you.
So it needs to be addressed.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Merrick, what specific policies will you promote to ensure students and staff are safe at all city schools, whether it be threats from harassment, bullying or even weapons on campus?
Safety needs to be first. Our superintendent Jonathan Williams says that is first with him and I agree with him. If students and teachers don't feel safe, you not have much education going on. So that's first and foremost, we spend a lot of money. We have cameras, we have the metal detectors, we have self-locking doors, we have the call system where you have the match to be identified to come in. So we're doing things and we're looking for even more technology as it comes about and we can afford it, we'll add more safety features. So it is an attitude that you have from top of it to bottom about having safety as a priority. Now for bullying, we have an alternative school for the bullies. And if they're identified as a bully, we will not let one student disrupt the education for twenty of us. We will call them out, put them in an alternative school and hope that they learn the one-on-one teaching situation not to be a bully. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Thank you.
Mr. Merrick, keep the microphone, please. I'm going to ask you to respond first to the next question if I may. What must be done to increase teacher retention in Whiteville City Schools and to ensure that teachers are supported financially and professionally?
We in this Columbus County, this is a poor county, bottom five in the state. So you're not going to match up money-wise with you handle a problem. We can try, we can do whatever we can financially to give our teachers all that we can. But it's got to be some emphasized finances to retain teachers in Whiteville City Schools. We're doing a fabulous job. We're in top ten in the state. As poor as we are, we're in the top ten in the state of retaining teachers. How do we do that? Our survey at the end of every year is also reflective that Whiteville City Schools is a good place for a teacher to work. We are consistently high with our marks of teacher satisfaction in their working conditions. Now a lot of that comes from attitude. You've got to have the right attitude in the school system from your top to your administrator to all the teachers where they know that they're succeeding and accomplishing the goal of educating children to the best they can do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Gaskins, what must be done to increase teacher retention in your school system and to ensure they're supported financially and professionally?
I agree, Mr. Merrick. I can, I can, I can see the tire, I think it's hard to stand up to teachers before you die and then go to the cabinet. I think maybe more community, businesses involved and offering some type of incentive for a teacher than my three year or something or whatever. I think that to keep a teacher here in Whiteville City Schools and Columbus County is a hard task because you're in the front getting out of school. It has, again, it has to be a little bit more to it than the money. You got to like where you stay, you got to like the people, maybe close to the beach, whatever, but it's, it's a difficult thing. I think also recruiting could be properly looked at a little bit, maybe to get more minority teachers in to represent the people that we serve. Maybe, I don't know, who you have to recruit, but that's something that I definitely want to look at and what we're going to recruit and who we send to recruit. But other than that, I think that based on what we are and the low income economy keeps us a huge student.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Squires, what must be done to increase teacher retention and to ensure they're supported financially and professionally?
Well, first of all, when I started teaching, I know I didn't get any survival teacher for money. You don't get a viable teacher for money. You get a viable teacher for love children. You get a viable teacher for love that have an impact on people's lives. So we got to make sure that one, we make sure that the students and the teachers continue that love of teacher. We got to make sure that they have a vibe that's conducive, where they continue to love them on a big teacher. How do you do that? One, I don't know, no one is ruling, I'm like both. So as a school system, we got to make sure, one, that we provide professional development that's allowed to grow in their, in their particular career. If they're math teachers, provide PD, that's always a teacher, professional development to grow within their, their knowledge. Number two, support new teachers. You know, I meant, I was describing earlier about supporting new teachers. I started Robson County, I had a teacher tops assigning me my first three years to make sure I understood, I was supported while I was teaching. It's very important we support teachers the first career. Also for our teachers, those that have been there for years, can take support them. Number three, make sure we provide resources. I did a little survey myself while I've been running the county. I hit a couple of teachers, I said, what challenge do you have in the student system? No resources. So we got to make sure that we as So we got to make sure that we as a school system provide resources, support these teachers that keep them here. And they're not doing it for the money, they're doing it for the love. And we got to provide a plan for them to grow.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ray Pierce, what must be done to increase teacher retention in the school system and ensure that they're supported financially and professionally?
Okay. Teachers, I think, are the foundation of the school. I also think teacher, being a teacher, being an educator is a calling. Um, not everybody is a teacher. And I think that it's very important that when you hire, um, an educator, that you need to see their love for children. They need to be here, they want to teach. It's not about the money, it's about the children, it's about, um, helping children grow. Uh, I've always thought, and my mama is still listening to me, that, um, teaching is the most important job in the world because it is the only job that touches every other job. And we've got to have good quality teachers, top-notch, not second string or third string. We have to have the, um, best teachers that we can possibly hire. They guess, the loans are counting, the rent are counting, um, they do pay more and, um, they have the extra tax dollars and, um, other supplements that they can pull from. But I think Whiteville City Schools has an excellent, um, an excellent array of educators in all the different schools. And I think we need to continue to, um, provide, uh, different ways that they can enhance their teaching and enhance their learning and continue, um, trying to be the best teachers that they can be.
Thank you, ma'am. I ask you to hold the microphone, we'll get your response first to the next question. Ms. Ray Pierce, how will you work to ensure that funding and resources are allocated fairly across all schools? And we're talking to things like big arts, STEM education, and even athletics.
Yes. Um, I think those things are very important, to have a very well-rounded student. You need to have athletics, you need to have the arts, you need to have all the different extracurricular things that can help, um, form a child into being a very well-rounded child. Um, I don't know about the budget, um, yet, or, um, what monies can act, can be allocated, but I think that we definitely need, um, I'm definitely a supporter of paying our coaches more. They spend hours and hours, um, it's almost a second job. And they spend hours, um, trying to, you know, help form a child, teaching them the skills that they need to play baseball or tennis or basketball. Um, I, I also think that, um, you know, I lost my train of thought, so, but, um, I think you need that, that the extracurricular activities are very important, um, for a well-rounded child.
Thank you, ma'am. With respect to the arts, STEM education, and athletics.
If you brag on Whiteville City Schools and the community just a minute. For our side, we only have a little over 2,000 students. There's no small town in the state of North Carolina where the citizens support their school system and their children, even though in Whiteville City Schools. And I am so appreciative of that. If we need money, the community brings a lot of money to bear for athletics, uh, for band, for whatever it is. Uh, there's kids all ages asking for someone to donate, raise a money, and very few people in the, uh, community will pass them out. We as a system have so much money that we allot as equal as we can. But it's not a great amount. I've already said it, Plum's County is one of the bottom five, uh, poorest counties in the, in the state. So it's up in the community to compete. And there is a will in the Whiteville community to compete in everything, whether it's band, whether it's arts, uh, athletics. And that drives the community to support the kids and for us to have the money to be competitive in any field.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gaskins, how will you work to ensure that funding and resources are allocated fairly across all schools in the system with respect to arts, STEM education, and athletics?
Uh, it's kind of hard to speak on that to, I'm looking at the budget, but I think that, uh, I think that's, that's fair statement. I think all kids deserve the right to dream whatever they would like to be. Um, Ms. Ray, we're saying about the coaches, not only should the coaches be paid extra, but, uh, the teachers should be paid extra for doing their career activities after school too, if that be the case, because that's like a job to them as well. And in the record, they are coaches, uh, coaching whatever, whether STEM education or whatever it may be. Uh, as far as community is concerned, I think it's great that Ms. Ray just mentioned what you did. Uh, but I, I think our kids should, maybe the community need to get, the whole, whole community need to be involved because our kids need to be exposed to outside of our, uh, you know, take the field trip, take the trip to college, uh, just to get exposed to other things, and those things cost money. Uh, so I think the community involvement goes right back again, relationships. That's what I, that's my take to it. You got relationships with all of the communities and all of the kids and all of our people foster, and the community will be much better.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Squires, how will you work to ensure that funding and resources are allocated fairly across the school system with respect to the arts, STEM education, and athletics?
Well, first of all, we need it to be identified fairly, but it's gonna be the same amount. Let me explain that to you. Sports at Whiteville Primary not gonna be the same sports neither Whiteville High School. So that budget for sports at, where my grandmother goes, not gonna be the same budget for my, 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 my high schools, so identify that. So we got to make sure, one, identify what the needs are per school. I wrote down here, the principal to identify the budget and the dreams. I like the principal to have an idea, what do you need in your school? What can you help me with that? What can we do as the board to identify that? And the budget would be different per school. We measure STEM, we can get STEM education from federal grants. STEM is getting people like Toby Elba. I was looking on the board this past week, I didn't see anything about STEM. Very little about STEM. We need boards of STEM, going on STEM in science, technology, engineering, mathematics. We can pull grants from that. From the arts, that's talking to our lovely nonprofits, get to the museums, and see if we apply the brand like a gold leaf grant to bring the money for our schools. Talking about sports, Mr. Mary Hitt, Whiteville High School is the best supporter of sports program I think in North Carolina for the size. I know, I'm a big Blue Rooster, I know I pay every year to, uh, to support the sports program. They take their money to sports program, they take their tickets, so sports program is not gonna go back in Whiteville High School. But we got to make sure all the other budgets are being concerned, all the other little schools, you know, the Whiteville Academy, the private, we make sure that budget, man, basically, I think I said before, identify from the principals and administration teams to these schools, what is your dream desire and what's the budget to be there? And we identify the money need and you get that money.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're gonna move to the closing statements of our events this evening. Sixty seconds each, or somewhere around there, for each one of our candidates. We're gonna go reverse alphabetical order, a closing statement this evening from Edward Squires. Mr. Squires, you have sixty seconds, sir.
Uh, first of all, well, thank you for coming out tonight to this forum. I thank you for taking the time out, come out this way to hear us. And, uh, we don't take that for granted and give subtle applause. I mentioned earlier about the degrees, I mentioned earlier about my experience, but I'm gonna talk today about my desire and my heart for young people. When I started our program in High Point, we was the lowest performing program in the city. We were, we was multicultural, we were 95% poverty, we went from a three-star to a five-star. Why? Because I wanted, I wanted a program that's top-notch. I came down here, I volunteered, I coached the kids for no money. I, I pro bono doing stuff for kids while I had a passion for kids. I come here, I'm gonna make sure our kids are successful, make sure our kids are moving to our next level, make sure our kids have that idea of what they want to do when they graduate high school. Everyone is not going to college without identifying, but what's your plan after high school? I want to support the principal, support the superintendent, support the teacher as someone to be identified as a former administrator. I understand the needs of the students, the teachers as a parent, a grandparent, I understand that concern as well. I want to be transparent. We need to make sure that our people trust the board, trust us as individuals. Transparently know, you come here with Squires, he's gonna tell you the truth, but no hidden gems. Number one, the last thing is, if you looking, if you looking for someone that's not gonna push the board, if you looking for someone that's not gonna make changes, if you happy with Whiteville City Schools is, don't vote for me. If you want change, vote for me.
Thank you, sir. Next, for front close, we say that this evening, we will go to Whiteville City School Board candidate, Jackine Ray Pierce. Ms. Ray Pierce?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody, excuse me, for coming out tonight and listening to the weather. Um, thank you for allowing us to use this wonderful facility. I really appreciate the invitation, um, to come out and, and listen to all of us. Um, I, I am a business owner. I have a set of skills, um, that I use very wisely, teaching methods skills, um, profit-making skills, uh, people skills that I think would be, um, a very good asset, um, as a person on Whiteville City School Board. I love children, I'm involved with children. Um, I think that they are, um, very important in the, to be able to see them advance, have the curriculum that they need, um, be able to be, uh, ready for the next, um, step in going to college or out in, out in the work field or in a trade. Um, I, as being on the foundation board at Southeastern, I know the avenues that can help students get there. And I just want to ask for the opportunity, um, to be on the board, um, so I can help advance our students, um, help with, um, teaching as far as, um, providing support for our teachers. And I would just like the opportunity to do so. So thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and have a check your vote on a year.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, for his closing statement this evening, Whiteville City School Board candidate, Ray Pierce. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for this opportunity to express my thoughts to you on education. I, uh, think teachers are called, I think school board members can be called also. I feel like it's been a calling from my Lord to, to put myself in this position to serve the community. One more term, I'll have enough time in and retire like a teacher do, I have 28 years here, uh, so I think the Lord is saying, one more term for me, uh, if y'all think of it to put them there. But again, it's been an honor and privilege to serve this community. I'm proud of the school system, Whiteville City Schools, and I continue to be proud that I've been here all my life, 71 years. And, uh, I appreciate the support of this community, of this school system, and hope that it will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, for his closing statement this evening, school board candidate, Ernie Gaskins. Mr. Gaskins, sir.
I was just sitting here thinking, uh, since graduating from college, I've actually been around kids in some form or another, so I just think I've got four years of experience, uh, not only being a kid, but in colleges and acting, uh, as a assistant principal at the high school and counselor. As we speak, uh, I hope to go around to all the high schools here in the county and try to help our young people with energy, with senior, with career paths, uh, help them to live their dream job. Uh, I think Whiteville City Schools will be a great job, I think Whiteville City Schools can make better jobs. Uh, so I ask, I believe to consider my qualifications, I think it speaks for themselves, I believe in person, I believe in relationships, I believe in living with people together, I believe that people come together, they can make big things happen. So, uh, I'm gonna ask your vote in the past, for your, uh, God's mind, uh, successfully , uh, work for this, uh, this community. So, I think our, our family and the training, and that tells us that this means a lot to you as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, round of applause for our city school board candidates this evening. We thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for once again stepping aside on the dotted line of the mud. Please don't forget early voting in the state starts October the 17th. Election day is November the 5th. Please get out and make your voice heard and cast a ballot. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
So what, uh, really gave you that ask question to go ahead and make that run for school?
Um, thank you for that question, Logan. Uh, first of all, it would be the fact that I am a parent, I'm a very concerned parent, uh, have a daughter in East Columbus, and, um, I want to see our school system reach its potential. But my passion for education, um, and it has, it plays a big part in that. Um, I've spent, uh, my whole career in the classroom, and I want to see students reach, that reach their potential. We know they come from many, um, home environments. We know that we have diversity, not just diversity, um, from our cultures, but diversity in our learning styles. And, um, I want to see Columbus County schools be the best they can be, and I think it's time for an educator to come to, um, the table with that experience and bring it to the boardroom.
I, I want to touch on, uh, and this is a question because people know you for the East Columbus Education Foundation. If you're elected in November, will that organization continue to go on?
Yes, absolutely. Um, East Columbus Education Foundation was founded by me, um, and, but, um, it's not thriving only because of me. We have a great team working together, um, and I do want to see that organization continue to thrive because it's needed in our school, it's needed in East Columbus. Uh, we have key community members who we have brought on board, who are continuing to work, and, um, we have leadership that has stepped up, um, so I'm hoping to pass the torch. If I am elected to someone, um, and a team of people who are gonna continue to, um, take that group and, um, help it grow and really take it and run, um, there are skills that others can bring to the table that maybe I don't have. So, I'm looking forward to seeing how that organization continues to grow, and I want to see it continue to, um, serve and advocate for our students and staff in East Columbus.
And in local races, you have one of the biggest endorsements from state superintendent candidate, Michelle Murrow.
Yes.
Uh, she's come under some criticism for comments she's made in the past about politicians and political rivals. I want to ask, you gave her your endorsement, correct?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay. Do you believe, uh, her platform for her run for state superintendent, do you believe that she'll be a good fit for that position?
Um, I think that, um, it's, it's no secret that I'm a conservative and I do, um, um, put values on my ethical and moral, um, compass. So I think that that is where, um, she and I would probably see eye to eye the most. Um, and I think we do need that to continue to protect our public schools from where the world is wanting to take it. Um, I, it does not mean I agree with every single thing that she has said. Um, I think we need to be very careful about how we use our state monies to support, um, private school vouchers and support our, um, charter schools. I want to see our state money stay in the public schools. So she and I are gonna differ there. However, um, I do think that she'll be a good candidate. I think she's passionate about education, I think she's passionate about learning, and, um, therefore I did give her my support and I will.
Hey, what do you feel you've brought to the table and what do you ask that voters think about in November to continue to give you another four years?
In my, uh, previous life, uh, my job, I worked with ATMC, which is now focused broadband for 40 years. I started off, uh, out of high school and I retired, I was the vice president, I had nine managers. I learned, hard work, gets you, uh, that is, helps you advance. And our teachers, I believe that's one of the things we need to do is to make sure our teachers, we instill that in them. They can advance in our system, and that's one of the things I want to do in my job. I had to maintain, I had to develop a budget yearly and then execute that budget. So I feel like me being able to look at our budget, I can, I can understand what's going on and bring a level from a business perspective to the boardroom.
Uh, teacher retention, retention was brought up tonight. Uh, we do know that Whiteville City Schools does hold teachers more than Columbus County Schools, so I want to ask, with them being a very nearby school district and serving the same county, uh, what steps do you think Columbus County Schools should take? And also, um, what do you say to any teacher who's looking to get into the profession, why they should choose Columbus County Schools?
Uh, that's a tough one, why they retain and we don't. What I think needs to happen is they, at this point and through the past few years, may have a better, uh, morale in their school system than we do, and that's one of the points that we've got to work on. And I think our new superintendent and assistant superintendent being part of them and have come through the system, I think they're gonna push the morale of our school district up, which will help with retention. We'd all love to pay We'd all love to pay more money, but it's hard to find and it's hard to get, but we're going to do our best to raise the, uh, retention bonuses just as much as we possibly can within our budget. Uh, also, one more thing, is our, our teacher assistant, two teacher program that we are partnering with UNCP, uh, if we can get our teachers aid to just take the courses at home in a short period of time, if they've been there five to ten years, some are completed in it and as short as eighteen months become certified teacher, those people are Columbus County residents, they're going to be with us forever. So, that's a really good pool to pull from to retain those teachers.
What do you think you'll bring to the Whiteville City Schools School Board and why folks should vote for you in November?
I think I bring a, um, a passion for young people. Um, I currently have three degrees in education, one early childhood, uh, BK, and then a master education in the NPLNT. I bring a passion, I bring experience, I bring a love for not only kids, but for teachers, principals, counselors. I bring a, I bring a, uh, business experience. Not only do I have experience in the classroom, also I have experience running organizations. I've actually owned three businesses, currently own a business not here in Whiteville, I have experience working on boards. I was a, I was a high school owner, planning on a board, I'm currently, I'm on the Dream Center board here, I was a high school, how I thought of boards, and I understand youth teaching, principal, I understand how to bring boards together, accomplish a common goal and task to enhance our people.
Do you feel the current, uh, Whiteville City School Board is given the best environment for students to move forward, whether it be in their career and their education after they get out of high school?
I, I don't believe that give them the best environment, I believe they're doing good, I believe we can always get better. I believe that our youth need to have a plan for after high school. For example, I was looking at, I'm a coach, and I was looking at their requirements for us youth to play sports, and for example, that a student to play sports the next semester has to have a two point zero GPA. Level or a C average the semester before, in the spring can play in the fall, fall play in the spring, and outwardly, we're looking at, that's great. The challenge is, if those kids are athletic enough to play at the next level in college, the minimum GPA those kids have to have to play in college is a two point two. So, let that sit in for a second. A kid can play, can play every semester in high school, two point zero, two point zero, two point zero, they Campbell or Fairwood State or Methodist or North Carolina State come on and they play a sport, they can't play. Why? Because the academics won't let them play. So, I believe as we as a board, we need to look at policies like that, like maybe changing from a two point zero to a two point four, a two point five, so those students who may be athletic inclined can go to the next level. So, I believe that we need, we doing good, but I think we need to find tools in our policy to get them prepared for the next level, not just athletics, all around.
Okay. And, um, my last question, Whiteville City Schools, that is true that Mr. Mayor was saying, they do have good teacher retention.
Yes.
Why do you think that is?
I think that, I think they have good student, I mean, good teacher retention. Well, most teachers, some, most of them from us are from this area. I think also it's a good area to live in, we're close to the beach, um, we're close to Wilmington, so it's a good area for retention. I believe it's small, a small school setting, uh, a lot of people here familiar with one another, a lot of the people, the administration are from here, some teachers from here, so they kind of know each other. But I believe in order to keep growth and to keep retention, we got to put outside, bring people in, that's not necessarily from Columbus County, necessarily from Whiteville, to identify what our youth, also bringing diversity for our teachers and for our administrators to keep in there, because if you knows already, around Columbus County, we're building two thousand homes here, one thousand homes there, so eventually, that, that small, that small Whiteville High School is going to grow, there's going to be more students there, there's going to be money for more teachers, so we got to make sure we create a program for a better retention, not to have teachers who exit from here.
Why should Columbus County voters in November vote for you? What do you think you bring to the school board?
Well, I am a mother, a concerned citizen, and I've been an educational advocate for the past forty years. In one aspect of my professional life and personal life, as the president of the PTA, um, I was an educational advocate in New York, and I did adult and child protective services here in North Carolina, so I have like a well-rounded, um, understanding, my interest in youth, adolescents, um, the eleven to, um, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds. And, um, I, all the skills that I've had all over the years, I put them together, I can do budgets, I can do hiring and, uh, a best credentialing, a best, professionals, a flexing degree, that would be the job that the superintendent would do, but hopefully I can add input there as well, with who should be hired, retained, or, or trained.
Do you feel the current, uh, school board is making progress and moving forward, uh, in, in this can be in education and funding for the schools? Do you think they're giving the best path for students to go forward in life?
Yes, offering everyone the benefit of the doubt, moving forward, the diversity I've been, I've been to the board, there are no Democrats, and many, uh, retired teachers, you could trip over one in Columbus County, um, there are no women on the board, you know, I'm somebody's grandmother and, uh, you know, I bake cookies, and they say...